We on? Nikes are on.
I have to see the results.
Excellent. Well, good evening, everybody. For the record, Thursday, March 9th, 2023, time for the regular meeting of Wenatchee City Council. I've called the meeting to order. We always start with a pledge to our flag. Whose turn is it? Councilmember Cuevas? I think you did it last time, too. Let's do two in a row.
Let's roll this again. Please rise.
Off the flag, so.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Cuevas.
You're welcome, sir.
Roll call this evening. We have all seven councilmembers present. So our first item on the agenda would be citizen comment. So if there's any member of the audience that wishes to address us on anything that's either on tonight's agenda or not, we'd give you three minutes or so and have you come up and give us your name and address for the record. And you can talk to us. If you're here for the agreement between the City of Wenatchee and Coast LLC, we'll take comment then for that. Otherwise, anybody else wish to address the council? Seeing no takers, we will move on to our regular agenda items, the first being the consent items, which includes approval of this evening's agenda vouchers and our minutes from the previous meeting.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent items. Motion to approve agenda vouchers and minutes from previous meetings.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hornby, second by Councilmember Ojan Astian to adopt this evening's consent items, including the agenda vouchers and our minutes from our previous meeting. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have two presentations tonight. The first is regarding Red Cross Month. Looks like Councilmember Kulis. Do you have that?
Yes, I do. Whereas during American Red Cross Month in March, we celebrate the humanitarian spirit of Wenatchee and reaffirm our commitment to help ensure no one faces a crisis alone. Whereas caring for one another is at the heart of our community and exemplified by the people of Wenatchee, whose simple acts of kindness through the Red Cross provide help and hope in people's most difficult moments, continuing the life-saving legacy of Clara Barton, who founded the organization more than 140 years ago to prevent and alleviate human suffering. Whereas every day, these ordinary individuals lend a helping hand to make an extraordinary difference for neighbors in need, whether it's providing emergency shelter, food and comfort for families displaced by home fires and other disasters, donating life-saving blood for cancer patients, accident victims, and people with sickle cell disease and other life-threatening conditions, supporting military members and veterans, along with their families and caregivers, through the unique challenges of service, or delivering international humanitarian aid and reconnecting loved ones separated by crises around the world. Whereas their support, volunteerism, and generous donations are critical to our community's resilience. We hereby recognize the month of March in honor of all those who fulfill Clara Barton's noble words, "You must never think of anything except the need and how to meet it," and ask everyone to join in this commitment. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Frank Coontz of Wenatchee, hereby proclaim March 2023 as Red Cross Month. I encourage all citizens of Wenatchee to reach out and support its humanitarian mission. In witness whereof, I have caused the seal of the City of Wenatchee to be affixed on this ninth day of March, 2023. Frank J. Coontz, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Kulis. And I see Doug Jones is with us tonight. To accept this on behalf of the Red Cross. Doug, how are you?
I'm very good. Thank you, Mayor.
Good to see you. Want to come up and address everybody? Or you can talk that way or use a microphone if you want to do it either way.
Sir, I'm Doug Jones. I'm on the Inland Northwest Board of the Red Cross. So on behalf of the board and the executive director, Ryan, we just want to thank you for your support. The banners downtown look great for Red Cross Month. And we have about 50 or 60 local Red Cross volunteers that support all the fires and certainly the shelters and things we set up throughout the year. So we appreciate your support and with this proclamation as we continue that great work. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. And next, we have the Apple Blossom Royalty Proclamation, which I will read into the record, assuming I remember how to read. Whereas the Washington State Apple Blossom Festival has been a Wenatchee community tradition since 1920. And the Washington State Apple Blossom Festival is our premier family-oriented festival that showcases our people, community heritage, and the fruit industry. And whereas the Washington State Apple Blossom Festival Royalty help promote this ongoing community celebration and act as ambassadors of our community at local, state, and international celebrations. And whereas Scarlett Crohn has been selected as the 2023 Festival Queen with Dylan Schmitten and Natalie Pearson selected as the 2023 Festival Princesses. Now, therefore, I, Frank Coontz, on behalf of the City of Wenatchee City Council, hereby formally congratulate and bestow our appreciation to the 2023 Washington State Apple Blossom Festival Queen Scarlett and Princesses Dylan and Natalie. In witnesses whereof, I have set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Wenatchee to be fixed on this ninth day of March, 2023. Frank Coontz, Mayor. Ladies, come on up. Welcome to find you. Do you want a microphone? Or you want either one?
I've never used a microphone like this. I'll take this opportunity. But this has been such an amazing experience. And we all love this valley so, so much. So just to get to see all of these amazing people that make it so capable. And our beautiful new city hall, which, wow, didn't know it was here, this big. I knew it was here. I didn't know it was this big. But yeah, we're super grateful, super excited to be here tonight. So thank you. And.
So we'll see you next Friday night.
You didn't let the others speak.
Where are we going next Friday night?
St. Patrick's Day.
Hey.
Right, Councilmember Kulis?
You're not going to let the others speak? The princesses speak?
I don't know. It's up to them. It's their show.
Don't they sing a song or something?
I don't know. Kulis wants to know if you guys sing a song or not. Not yet.
Not yet.
I heard they're practicing. Is it true?
It's in the works.
It's in the works. We'll come back when you're all practiced up, please.
We will.
Thank you. Thanks, ladies. Thanks, CC. And you don't have to stay. You can go. All right, we have one, two, three, four action items tonight. The first is regarding angle parking by Washington Park. Mr. Erickson, how are you, sir?
Good. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. I'm Dave Erickson, Parks and Recreation Director for the city. This evening, we're requesting approval of ordinance 2023-03, which would actually authorize us to install angle parking on Wilson Street along Washington Park for a number of different reasons. One, to increase capacity. So it lessens the impact of picnic shelter rentals and park uses on the neighborhoods. Folks aren't driving down that farther. The back-end angle parking also then would allow to increase safety. So if people are coming for their shelter rentals, they can back in, they can pop their trunk, offload their coolers, don't have to walk in traffic. And then in a future, a part of the project, when we get to the project, would be to replace the sidewalk, which has really failed along that section of the street, too.
Is that happening this year as well?
No, no. That would be a future budget request.
Angle parking happening this year?
Next year or through a future budget request, yeah. This is just to authorize the angle parking. And then we will come back later with a capital request for the angle parking, for the sidewalk improvements.
Got it.
And then also to underground the electrical and get that up to code. So that would be in the works. So we would do engineering, once this is approved, engineering.
I'm trying to figure out if I lied on KPQ or not. And I think technically, okay. Because I said we're going to get angled parking and the new sidewalk on Wilson. Is that true?
If council authorizes the budget for it, yes.
But we're not going to get the angled parking and not have the sidewalk fixed. That would happen at the same time.
Right.
Okay. So I think I was close to truth. Well, okay. Any questions for David?
So the power is going to go underground then? I think that's, that's good.
Yeah, we're actually working on the plans right now to underground the power at Pioneer, Chase, and Washington, because those are all overhead power lines. They're the old PUD poles. We would change those out to actually city poles. And that would then allow us to install security cameras on some of those poles as well. So we're improving the lighting, improving the safety by getting those overhead lines down, which in that last April snowstorm, we had a bunch of branches come down on top of those and take the lines down. So it'll be a number of different.
So what do you think it's going to cost to do the sidewalks and angle parking? Is that a half a million dollars, a million dollars?
I won't know until we have the engineering done. You know, I was guessing a couple of years ago when we looked at it, about $480,000 roughly.
Okay.
But once we get the engineering completed, that'll come with a cost estimate as well.
Okay. Well, that sidewalk needs to be redone. So I think doing the sidewalk and the angled parking and the new curb would all be great to do at the same time.
Yeah, sidewalk is awful.
Yeah. Well, since all the rest of it's new, or more than half of it's new.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Dave, I think we've discussed this before. And that's the, the current configuration kind of lends itself to people driving their cars onto, to park around the picnic pavilion. We're going to use some sort of bulliard setup? Or how do we discourage people from running over sprinkler heads?
Yeah. So a couple of different things. That happens in unfortunately more of the parks than we have. But the angle parking will bring it closer to the shelter. So not completely closer, but closer. We're going to have two ADA parking spots. Because, I didn't mention this, because we don't have ADA. This will also, when it's completed, will solve that ADA issue. And then we'll have that one ADA ramp there. So it won't be as wide like a driveway type of scenario that it is now. So they would have to hop the curb to get up and in.
So do we envision that there'll still be a planting strip between the sidewalk and the curb? Or the sidewalk's going to go right up to the curb line?
Yes. Yeah, to get the distance that we need to have the angles in there.
So will the sidewalk be a little bit wider than it is now to accommodate the front ends or the back ends of vehicles that overhang the curb?
Yes. Yeah, no wheel stops or anything like that. Just up to the curb.
All right, any other questions for David? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I would move for City Council to approve ordinance number 2023-03, amending Wenatchee City Code Section 6B dot 06 dot 155 to authorize angle parking adjacent to Washington Park.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Harold, second by Councilmember Hefker, I think got me on the left, to adopt ordinance number 2023-03, amending Wenatchee City Code Section 6B dot 06 dot 155 to authorize angle parking adjacent to Washington Park. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Appointment of Rosa Polito to the lodging tax. Who's got that? Laura? You've got the next two, actually.
Yeah. Good evening, Council. Laura Gloria, Executive Services Director. The item is two resolutions recommending the appointment of Rosa Polito to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee and the Tourism Promotion Area Committee. So in the past, that role was filled with the WDA, formerly Linda Haglen. And it was set on both committees to be able to have some ongoing collaboration between both committees. They didn't used to meet together, now they do. But I think it's still, sometimes they meet separately as well. So it's still a good transition to have someone consistent on both committees. So that's why it's one appointment for, or the same person for two different committees. Rosa, again, is the new executive director of the Downtown Association. And the committee unanimously supported recommending her appointment. I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions for Laura? If not, I entertain a motion.
Your Honor. I will recuse myself on this item.
Thank you.
Your Honor, I make a motion for the City Council to approve Resolution Number 2023-05 for the appointment of Rosa Polito to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee to fill an unexpired two-year term ending December 31, 2023, and Resolution Number 2023-06 for the appointment of Rosa Polito to the Tourism Promotion Area Advisory Committee to fill an unexpired three-year term ending December 31, 2023.
Motion by Councilmember Kulis, second by Councilmember Cuevas, to adopt Resolution 2023-05 for the appointment of Rosa Polito to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee to fill an unexpired two-year term ending December 31, 2023, and adoption of Resolution Number 2023-06 to appoint Rosa Polito to the Tourism Promotion Area Advisory Committee to fill an unexpired three-year term ending December 31, 2023. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the third amended and restated management agreement between the City of Wenatchee and Coast Hotels. So I will tee this up a little bit. Obviously, we've been negotiating with Coast Hotels and Doug Gregoni and his team for a couple of years. Their contract expires, I believe, at the end of next year. As you have, we've all discussed, we're considering spending, I think last I heard, $14 million on our convention center. Part of that discussion was meeting with Mr. Gregoni and the team from Coast about improvements to the hotel. We've been negotiating an agreement with them off and on for, I think, well over a year. So I think today concludes, we hope, what that negotiation looked like. So Laura, I'll turn it over to you to go through the details. And then we'll hear from Doug and some of the folks out in the audience. So Laura?
Great. Thank you, Mayor. And yeah, as the mayor mentioned, there's two tracks of projects happening at the same time or generally around the same time. The city's convention center project, which is hoped to be under construction in early 2024. And then the coast is looking to invest in their hotel and do some renovations as well. So the third amended and restated management agreement, basically that means we've had two amendments to it before. So we're doing a third one. But then we're kind of relooking at all of the terms. So it sort of incorporates all of the past work. The two prior amendments were related to COVID and the support that the city council provided for the utilities that we allowed, up to $100,000 for each of those years during the COVID pandemic. So that's why that's such a long title. But that being said, so the terms allow for a couple of things. And I'll kind of go through those here. So the current management agreement is set to expire at the end of 2024. This will extend the agreement through 2026. The contractors, so Coast Hospitality, will have to complete their hotel renovation project and finalize those expenditures before that 2026 deadline. That would give us the amount that they've spent, which plays into their next extension. So if they spend between $3 and $4.9 million on the hotel, the agreement will extend five years further from 2026. If they spend more than $5 million, then it will extend 10 years beyond 2026. If the hotel project does not move forward, then the contract would expire in 2026. Additionally, at the end of that time, there's also a provision for an additional five-year extension. That's upon mutual agreement by both parties. So that would be a decision that the council or, and leadership at that point in time would make. But that is included in there as a follow-up provision. A couple of monetary things that I want to point out in terms of fiscal impacts. So during construction of the city's project, so the city's renovation project will impact the front plaza and have, you know, construction on site as well as the current proposal anticipates doing construction on the existing rooms and the downstairs, the breakout rooms. So during that time of the construction of the city's project, the city will not collect a commission. You know, the facility won't be fully available to the contractor. The anticipated impact of that item is about $130,000. That's what we collect on a yearly basis on our commission. The other revenue component is the revenue share after termination. So the contractor, let's pretend that the contract was going to end in 2026. The contract, the contractor is selling years in advance. They're selling, you know, things that are coming up. It's not, it's not, it could be some items that are happening that month or that week. But generally, it's, again, years in advance. So this would give the contractor the ability to collect the revenue that was produced by them up to 180 days after termination. The anticipated fiscal impact of that item is about $50,000. But again, that depends on whatever is on the books and that's actually generated at that point in time. Let's see what else here. Lastly, the commission schedule changes. And that kind of plays back into the one year that we won't collect during the construction. But there is a change in what we collect. So the original contract said that we would collect an 8% commission after $750,000 in revenue is that threshold. And then during the construction period, we won't collect anything. After that, though, we will continue to get 8%. We will no longer have that $750,000 minimum. So that does change what we collect to remove that minimum threshold and just give us a straight 8%. That's a lot. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. Or as Mayor mentioned, Doug Gregoni and some of his team are here. I don't know if you, when you wanted to invite them up.
You want to do questions now? Or you want to hear from Doug and those folks before we have questions? Your pleasure?
Let's hear what they get.
Yeah. Let's hear from Doug and you guys. And then whoever else wants to come up. And then we'll ask some questions. And whoever we ask him of can come up and comment.
Your Honor, for the record, I will be recusing myself again.
But you can ask me questions if you want.
This is your chance to get back.
Exactly.
Doug, nice to see you.
Your Honor, council, city staff, and attendees, thank you very much for giving me an opportunity to be up here, to answer any of your questions. And also, thank you so much for the opportunity to continue to serve you, to serve the community, and to serve our visitors. We're excited about it. Now, we did, we did take the liberty of inviting three people to speak on our behalf and to talk about their experiences with us and our team. And before, and I can take questions now or I can take questions. But I thought we would invite these people up one by one.
Perfect. Let's have your folks that you invited come up and speak. And then we'll turn it back over to you. And then we'll take questions.
Fantastic.
Perfect.
So first of all, we're going to invite Tim Kovas up. And Tim is, he is the Director of Communications and Events for the Washington State Tree Fruit Association. Super important group. It's been coming since the, since the convention center was built, you know, forever, up to 1,700 people. And as you may know, it's a, it's a three-city cycle that they go through. And, you know, the hort, as we all affectionately call them, very important to us. So we're super privileged to have Tim here today. And why don't we, instead of me talking and talking, I'd much rather have Tim. Thanks for coming in.
Welcome, Tim.
Thank you. Again, my name is Tim Kovas. I'm the Director of Communications and Events for the Washington State Tree Fruit Association. The Washington State Tree Fruit Association is a voluntary nonprofit association representing the grower, packer, and marketers of apple, pears, and cherries in the state of Washington. We do education programs, conferences, statistics to enable our growers and packers to plan for market opportunities and engage with Washington state government at all levels on issues that affect us, with this being one. As was mentioned before, we've been doing the Hort Show for 118 years. It's a three-city rotation. Wenatchee, which hosted us last year, will be in Tri-Cities this December, and then Yakima in 2024. And then back in Wenatchee in '25. You know, knock on wood, there's not a pandemic.
Yeah.
I guess my message would be, you know, we love coming to Wenatchee. We've had constraints with the footprint. So we're very encouraged with the expansion and very excited, at least the last renderings that I've seen, add a lot of needed space. This last year, the folks that put on the trade show for us had to rent out the Toyota Center, which was not ideal, but necessary for us. You know, one thing that we always enjoy coming to Wenatchee is the staff and customer service. You know, we get great response. And Linda and Kyle do an outstanding job getting everything put together. And then their staff really executes phenomenally, flips rooms in quick turnarounds with no complaints and ease. So we're very thankful that they've had a long history of keeping staff on board. You know, we're excited to continue to stay in Wenatchee. And we really feel that both these projects are needed to continue our event being able to be hosted here. Like was stated last year, we had 1,700 attendees. You know, we average anywhere from 2,000 to 1,600 based on the year. So we're growing in our attendance. And our, as probably everyone knows here, our industry is changing. But we're going to need flexibility of space in the future to provide this needed event. So with that, I can take any questions or?
Any questions for Tim?
Well, I'm just kind of curious. So if this gets approved, and you know what we're doing with the convention center, spending the $14 million, you guys are going to be committed to keep coming here every third year?
I cannot speak to my board.
Yes.
They have the final authority on that. But I believe that if these projects are approved and we can see that there's progress being made towards updating and expanding the facilities, then it would be advantageous for us to continue to come here every third year.
So you'd express that to your board?
Yes. And every year, we, you know, again, as everyone knows, this is a very important growing region and packing and marketing region of our tree fruit. growing region and packing and marketing region of our tree fruit. So, you know, leaving one of our growing regions would be very difficult to start with. However, if we're boxed into not being able to provide the content and event, then tough decisions would have to be made. But I think having these projects moving forward from a, we hope to do these things, and we want to do these things, to actual, you know, there's a plan, there's a commitment of funds, there's, you know, engineering being done. Those all are concrete factors that we take into account.
Thank you.
I'm kind of curious how, I've been to several of the HORT shows in all three cities, and I'm kind of curious how you guys see the comparison of cities. I know Tri-Cities, it's basically one large campus. I know Yakima, you've got exhibitors at one location, and then meetings at the convention center. So that probably compares to what we've been doing. And so how do you feel these new plans would compare to the other cities?
Yeah. All three locations have their advantages and disadvantages. There's not a silver bullet to say one location has it all. Tri-Cities, as you say, correct, it's on one footprint. However, we're going to lose some trade show space in their Toyota Center. So that's not ideal. However, you know, they have large space, and it's flexible space. Yakima just finished renovation of their own and expansion, which was very nice. We were able to bring more vendors into the convention center, but we still had to use the sun dome, so that's not ideal. And then Yakima, we were in a similar dynamic, whereas the first year, our trade show partners rented the Toyota Center, and we had to do two sites and try to get people going back and forth, which that's not ideal anyways, but, you know, we, they lost like 30% of their vendors coming to Wenatchee. The other benefit was the parking lot. That helped some of our parking problems, which is probably our second problem with the Yakima facility, is parking is always very difficult when you have 1,700 just attendees and not even counting vendors. So, you know, that's something we continue to want to advocate for, is solutions there. But this would, this update would, I think, put you very competitive with the two other locations that we work with.
Thank you. How much money do you think does, does your organization bring into a community for an event like that? Do you guys do numbers like that?
I don't think we've ever done a, like, an economic impact.
Take 1,700 plus another three, 2,000. We're a lot, a lot of money.
Yeah.
How many days is it?
It runs from Monday to Wednesday afternoon.
Oh.
So two and a half days. And I know a lot of our service providers, Wilbur Elders, GS Long, bankers, like to take their clients and potential clients out for festivities, we'll say.
Lots of festivities going on in that, those three or four days.
It's, it can be a fun time for people.
All right. Any questions for Tim? Thank you, sir. Appreciate you being here. Doug, who's next?
Thanks, Tim. Next, we're going to invite Francine Christman, Washington Industrial Technical Education Association, better known as WIDA. Francine's here now with a group, and we're, we're super lucky to have Francine. Couple of tidbits. She first brought her group here in 2003, March of 2003, and a neat little fact, I mean, sad but neat, she was the last group here just before COVID, and she was the first group back right after COVID. So Francine, thank you so much for coming.
Francine, nice to see you.
Thank you. Yes, we have been coming for 20 years to Wenatchee, and I have brought not only the WITEA group, which is who we are today for this conference, but our, our tech prep group, which is no longer in practice, which was part of the early combinations between community and technical colleges and K-12 teachers. So we are the, I am from the actual Washington Association for Career and Technical Education, which is the Association of Career and Tech Teachers throughout the state of Washington. The group that is here today is the technology group, and this group refuses to go anywhere else. We tried one time taking them to Yakima. I heard more complaints than I chose to listen to, and they said, "Don't leave Wenatchee." So I've worked with Linda and Kyle for many years. Right today, we have 275 people on site, and we did a pre-conference session today, which was over 100 people. And this was something a little different for us. I dropped in on Kyle that I needed lunch for 100 people. Not a problem. Everything is wonderful there. And I, I really appreciate working with this convention center. I've worked with others throughout the state. I would love to be able to bring my, our big conference, but that brings about 900 people, and I don't, there's not enough breakout rooms. So that's our, our challenge with the convention center in bringing, and one of my directors there today said, "Are they going to make enough breakout rooms?" So that's one of the things that we look for, because we have breakouts, and that's taught by teachers and/or people that they bring in from all over the United States and even sometimes other countries. So I would take any questions you have, but I can't say enough about Wenatchee. If that's my choice, that's where I come.
Thank you, Francine. Any questions for Francine? Thank you for bringing her convention here and keep coming to Wenatchee every year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Lastly, I'd like to bring up somebody that you, you all know, and that's Steve Wilkinson, the Executive Director of the Wenatchee Valley Chamber of Commerce. Those of you who attended dinner just a few days ago, I, I trust you enjoyed your, your time. Steve, thank you.
Thank you.
Where's his gold suit?
I knew someone was going to say that. Buenos noche. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I'm delighted tonight to share my experience that I've had with the Wenatchee Convention Center staff. We've been working with them on numerous events, and as you know, the annual banquet as well. They are phenomenal, phenomenal staff for us. They've been very, very helpful. They're positive. They are flexible. They are prompt, and they're very professional. And at the event we had for Attorney General Bob Ferguson, that required some flexibility. That required security, and it required just certain nuances that were required by his security staff, by his support staff, and it was changing daily when Attorney General Bob Ferguson came in. We have some other coming in this year, some congressmen, congresswomen is coming in as well this year. And so we know how that requires some, you've just got to adapt and change. So I appreciate Linda and Kyle and their staff really being flexible with the convention center and with the chamber itself. I would have never known the next day was the Special Olympics. Thursday, we spent day and a half being preparing for our annual banquet. They were also preparing for the Special Olympics. They gave us 100% of their attention. I didn't even know what was going to happen in there until I walked downstairs. I said, "What's happening?" They said, "We're getting prepared for this Special Olympics." I said, "Wow." So for them to do that and to make it a positive experience for the chamber, I just thought that was incredible. So great staff. I'm really pleased with them. We always receive positive feedback from visitors at the convention center. They come up the street, they drink some wine, and they just share that they're having a great time at the convention and at the center itself, and they're very pleased with the convention center. So I know the renovations are even going to be more phenomenal for those, for those visitors as well. I just want to say thank you again in letting us be a partner with you, Linda and Kyle.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
I see you giving them all money after they come up and say...
I tell you what, that's humbling. It's always great to hear those stories. You don't get to hear them all the time, and it's a testament to Kyle and Linda and, and all the hard workers, you know, there. We couldn't do it without them. There's no doubt about it. Coast Hospitality thanks you again for this opportunity. We are committed to the future. I mean, we've been, boy, we've been involved for 30-plus years in the convention center. Our energy level hasn't waned. It's probably gotten even higher than ever. Our commitment to the future, and I keep mentioning that because it's very bright, what you're entertaining for the expansion fits in with the demands that we're finding. I mean, we are up in, in pre-booked business for this year, highest ever. And when I spoke last time, I mean, there are some pretty phenomenal numbers. Wenatchee is, I mean, you live here, we know how great it is, and more and more people are really seeing it. So the expansion's important. This contract is important. Longevity, continuation of our sales effort, continuation of the excellence in service is important to our customers, your customers, and visitors alike. From the hotels' perspective, again, we own that as well. We are committed to doing a, you know, significant renovation. We are getting started right now on that plan, and we know we've got some deadlines coming up, and we're committed to getting it done prior to those deadlines. And we, we want to have all of this done, you know, at the same time and come out with a big, you know, a big splash, convention center hotel, headquarters hotel, and drive even more business to, you know, to the whole valley. What kind of questions do you have? How can I help you?
Doug, Laura, you want to get up there too and let us ask, or do you guys have questions for either one of them? I don't know. I know we talked about it in the Finance Committee today a little bit, so any questions for them?
I have a comment. I just, I hope you spend plenty of money, because I do feel like this is a partnership, big type partnership that I'd like to continue. So I hope it, I'm sure you're looking at not the five-year, but you're looking at the 10-year, and like you said, to come out with a big splash for everybody.
We're really looking at 20 years. You know, that's kind of our horizon, what we think about. So, yes, and we're not looking at just five years.
Is there any questions?
I thought you were saying spend some more money so that Freddie didn't have to hang wallpaper this time.
All right. If we don't have any questions, then I would entertain a motion if we had one.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for City Council to approve the Third Amendment and Restated Management Agreement in substantially similar form between the city of Wenatchee and Coast Hotel LLC and authorize the mayor's signature.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Huffaker, second by Councilmember Poyer, to approve the Third Amendment and Restated Management Agreement in substantially similar form between the city of Wenatchee and Coast Wenatchee LLC and authorize the mayor's signature. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Doug. Thanks for the year and a half of working with Laura and getting us an agreement, and looking forward to a great partnership for the next 10, 15, 20 years. I'll be long gone by then, but looking forward to whatever you're going to do in that hotel to make it special, and what we're going to do to the convention center to make it special.
Thank you all. Greatly appreciated.
Thanks, Doug.
Thanks for being here.
All right. Our last item is Pershing and Poplar Sewer Extension Change Order. Mr. Harmon, how are you today?
I'm doing great. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Ryan Harmon, project engineer. I'm here in front of you today regarding our Pershing and Poplar Sewer Extension project. We started this project last year and have dealt with a number of problems or new variables along the way, one of which, as shown in the pictures in the agenda report, is the soil conditions. This has led to, to time extensions, and now this change order nine before you. Our expectation, our anticipation at the beginning of the project that we'd have five-to-seven-foot wide pavement sections, and the soils have doubled and tripled and quadrupled that in areas. And so that's where this, this number comes to you today. This is the increased pavement. This is the increased rock surfacing underneath that. And then also, now that we are going over the center line of the road on Pershing Street, we trigger a new overlay requirement. This is established in our franchise agreement with Chelan County, and it's actually something that we do on our city roads as well. And so I have any question, or if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
And this is not a new problem that we've run into when we've remodeled roads and had to dig big ditches in there, and all of a sudden the soil decides undone and...
It has happened. I know that most recently, on Dawn Terrace, a number of years ago, this was the case. The, with sewer projects, we're digging at depths quite a bit greater than our other ones, and that's where we can run into these types of problems.
And I think if I understand correctly, the bid we got was quite a bit under budget. So even though we're making a contract adjustment, because we approved a contract for a certain amount, the overall project is actually maybe coming in around budget even with this amendment.
That's correct. So Jacob Hyler was in front of the Finance Committee today, and we got very favorable bids at the time, which is fortunate, because this change order establishes a hard cost, but in some other change orders, we did come up with payment mechanisms. So the overall project price is going to be still under our $1.349 million, but it will be substantially larger than the contract cost that we negotiated originally.
Excellent. Any questions for Ryan? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for the City Council to authorize the mayor to execute change order nine with Matia Contractors, Inc., for the Pershing and Poplar Sewer Extension, City Project Number 2002.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Roger Nostetia, and second by Councilmember Hornby, to authorize the mayor to execute change order nine with Matia Contractors, Inc., for the Pershing and Poplar Sewer Extension, City Project Number 2002. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Ryan. Thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you.
I'll keep the mayor's report short. I need to get off to Linda Haglin's surprise retirement party, which wasn't a surprise for her anymore because it started at 5:00, so I guess I could say that publicly. I think it's at the, down at your place, I think, isn't it?
The local television center?
Yeah, that place. Yeah, that one. So, so I'll just tell you that obviously work continues on, both with Confluence Parkway, and I spent a lot of time on the phone with our elected officials in Olympia working on not only the bill for the, that would allow perhaps a tax vote for the Aquatic Center, but other legislation in Olympia as well. So watching both of those things very closely. Staff's working extremely hard on lots of things, so. Council members, anything for the good of the order? We are meeting next week in a work session. I think some of those items have adjusted just a little bit, and if you have any questions about some of those adjustments, you can either talk to me or talk to Laura a little bit. We've got some things we might not want to talk about exactly next Thursday, but I think we've got some things to talk about, including the Parks Comp Plan and a few other items. All right?